Alright. Maybe you can see from what's on the screen what I'm about to do. We're finally wrangling with calling conventions for struct passing, which LVM does not handle for us. Let me show you what we do now. When we pass a struct. I just need to find any old function signature. Wow, that's a lot of strings. Define, 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 define. Right. Most of these are test functions. I can't really find it. Okay, here's one. So here's assert equals for option strings. So it passes two struc. Um, we just pass pointers no matter what for all aggregate types because that's how we like represent them internally when dealing with LVMIR. We represent them as their address. And that does not work. That is not the calling convention. So um. Works fine for K1 to K1 calls, obviously. Um, but it's maybe not ideal. Maybe we'd wanna flatten that down for small ones, you know, so implement some portion of this calling convention. Even for internal stuff, but definitely for uh. When we call a C function, we need to do it right. So um, let's, let's dive in. So here I've got a function that takes a struct and I'm. Just gonna see what I can do. This is where we generate a function signature in LVM. And um. Yeah, it's pretty. This, this is some of the older code I have and that I just haven't had to touch it for quite a long time. It works fine. We do do struct return. That's right, but that's about it. So let's get in here. So for each parameter. Um, we just need to figure out what LVM type it should be. And so, you know, I've got my kinds here. Um, compiled my K1 types into these K1 LVM types, slightly more physical. And let's do it. So let's make this a function. Let param type and what it's gonna be is it's going to be um. Self dot um. Param type for call comp. And. I'm already thinking, okay, I'm gonna come out with a type here. And. Okay. I'm also thinking, do we, does it one, does one struct ever become two arguments? So let's do that first. Okay, in the flashbang. It's a fantastic blog post by the author of the INCO language. Um, just so you know, I did, I did read. The ARM calling convention official document to supplement my understanding. Um. Uh, but I am gonna work kind of off of this more simplified view from the blog post. And where I was going to check. Yeah, this struct. Once you have the pair of classes and use those types as the two fields for a newly generated structure. Okay. Okay. So you mingle around the struct. Fortunately, I've already done this shifting madness. Okay. So it, it stays one argument. Though that's cool. Because otherwise, so what I'm thinking about is we're mapping this, right? And if it were, if it, if it was the case that like the struct should be passed as two parameters, then our mapping needs to account for not just this one type to one type thing, but like one to many, right? Because whatever we do in the signature, we need to also do at call sites. So. And to show, you know, there's two sides to this, right? So we're gonna have extern C. Well, let's do the Raylib. Um, Raylib has like a set color. This, this thing, um. He writes these functions that take struc's. Alright, so it's actually this. And it actually takes a um. This. Alright. This is actually better. Ah, is it? Whatever. So here's the thing, right? Whatever I change about what's written here, I also have to do that. I need, I need, I need mirror code at the call site to um change mine. Or, or do I? Yeah, because. Yeah, shit moves around. How does this work? How does that even fit? There's a mixture of classes. Oh, there's a mixture promote the class to an integer. Okay. Maybe it's still the same bits. Um. Is it, is it the case? Okay, the struct. I thought these like things got, yeah, to completely move them around, but, but is that even true? Right, but then I need a value of that structure. But the, what I'm, what I'm thinking about is when I call this to get a value of that structure, do I have to actually like make code to build it? Or is it? Or does this transformation only ever change how we're naming it and never change the physical? It makes sense that it would never actually change the physical shape of it. So then it's just a mem copy, or I can just pass the thing I have. Talk about arguments. How do I actually pass it? Right, use that type. I understand that. It talks a little bit more about arguments. Yeah. Right. You just mem copy it. That makes sense. You can't just store to in it. Yeah. Caller must first mem copy it into an allocate slot. Sure, that's fine. That's all I have to do. A load from that allocate slot. Now that's interesting, cuz then you, ah, then you have a value of the type that they want. So I'm kind of understanding better now. We're gonna have. You know, putter of what's his example where it changes? I like, I like this example, right? So. We had. Alaka. Right? And now I'm, I'm gonna call this. So what I do is I say um. And, and he, he writes a pseudocode here. We're gonna be like. Param or arg equals mem copy. Well, right, we allocate. Arg is allocate. And this is V. Hope this makes sense. Mem copy into um. Arg V. Size. They'll, they'll always have the same size. And then we're gonna load. Arg, arg um. Slot, arg val. Load. Right, oh, mem copy, yeah, mem copy is just the type. Now, and this is where the type even comes in. We allocate that slot, we load it. And then when we call this, right, we're passing in our value. So really what we're achieving. Okay, cuz when I went into this, I thought we were gonna be like. Turning a struct into like past two int or whatever. What we're really achieving here. For these struct cases is just a cast to make LVM work, right? Mm-hmm. Okay. Well, I'll comment it out. This makes sense to me. And this one doesn't work because I'm passing a pointer and this thing would get passed as, let's see, it is um. It's four bytes. So let's go ARM. Arguments. Hmm, it doesn't. If it's up to eight bytes. It's four, 64 bits integer. You wanna implement that first? That sounds easy. But what does AMD64 do? Less than eight bytes. Eight bytes. So yeah, we have four. So U32. Oh, it's different. So that's gonna be U32 and on the other it's gonna be 64. So if it's less than eight. And if it is eight. And it's the same for ARM64. If it is eight, uh, 2I64. Oh, shit. Oh, no, it's still one. Okay, in LVM it's still one, cuz there's only one return type and it'd still be one param. It's just the struct becomes 2I64 values. Let's not change. Yeah. Oh, okay, so with this one for return. With this one for a return, you return exactly U32. But you'd pass it as a 64. No, oh, no. Okay, okay. Well. So I think. Couple of things, you know. It's not that hard. We'll get there. I'm thinking through, you know, putting some parameters on the shape of the code I'm gonna write. I think I have a good idea of what to do at call sites. I'm gonna look into my metadata for that function and I'm going to find. The. You know, for my param, the way to pass it, right? And maybe I have some enum for the way to pass it, you know, and if it's small enough, then I have the type to pass it as. And if it's the, the case we were talking about here, then I would put like, you know. Call it a struct cast, right? And I would do it that way. And then if it's exceeding the size, right, then I would say. Um, you know, struct by val or whatever. That code that I had already written, um, or stubbed out. So I think that that's about it. I may end up needing this enum saying where I may just need like the, the type to pass it as and it'll be apparent. That stuff will all become clear, but I think knowing that it's always still just one, one param to one param. One return to a return, uh, gives me some clarity there. And I'm starting to understand. Uh, a bit about. How this will take shape. So um, I'm not even sure. Yeah, I don't need to compute the call comp here, but I will pass the linkage. Param type for call comp. We'll do it, we'll do that. Okay. Uh, param type. Ooh, let's just for now, just say it's external. If. Typed function linkage. External. What I'm gonna do. Is I am gonna put in a to-do, a big fat to-do, say, you know, I'm gonna commit um. Don't leave internal calls alone. Optimize a bit. Bit, something simple. Less than word size passed. As an I64. Less than um two words. Asked as I64. Right, or, or for internal calls, I could just use um. I could just use the platform convention. Otherwise pointer? I don't know. But this is the current thing we do. We just do the canonical repertoire type. So we'll just call this param type. Ooh, why is there also a param types? What's that used for? Cuz for debug types. Debug types. It's gonna be a nightmare with this, right? Maybe not. Maybe it is. And I don't think I need to know anything else. Let's have this be right after function signature. Uh, basic type enum. Whoops, I had already done that. No, that's the one I just did. Am I crazy? Okay, cool. Scalar. Right, up to, yeah, my scalars are all. Alright. Let's do this. Let's do, let's do the small struct, right? Um. What's wrong with this? Oh, okay. That makes more sense. Maybe? Well, let's. Yeah, struct, let's. I'll, I'll, I'll do, I'll calculate the calling convention up here. Um, we don't need to check this. It's just this. Because we decided to do that separately. Right? We're just gonna keep this really lightweight for now. Just wanna make a little progress. This is just, yeah. When you don't know what you're doing, you know, just move, move a little bit. Alright, so we have scaler. I know how I wanna do enum's. I wanna do it as um. Well. So it's like a union. Which uh. I don't know how those typically get passed. I, I wanna just pass the opaque bytes, I think. Um. Right. Mm-hmm. Sure. But. In my case, I have a union of struc's. Yeah, I know that. Yeah. Oh. So C doesn't have this, right? Okay, but how do I wanna model these in C? I would wanna model it as um. What I would write in C. Would be. It's the uni, it's union. With um. No, it's struct. With tag. Let's say. Tag tie tag. Union. Right? Payload. And each of these is whatever the payload type is. Maybe an F32, maybe a struct. But we don't know which one it is, so we can't just like apply the rules for the floats, right? So we have to treat this as just bits. So what you, what you do. Is you say, you know, um, whatever the size is. So this one would be 64. You just say. I8 times eight. Payload. And it would be whatever the calling convention is for that. Maybe I write, maybe I write a function that goes from my. My kinds here, actually, down to an LVM struct or not, right? And then the function um on the LVM struct does the call convention thing. You might ask, well, what do you use? Like currently today, you, you pass this as a pointer and then you load. I load it as um. Well, I don't overload the entire aggregate. But we pass it around as just bytes for the whole thing. So do you do it that way? How many bytes this, the tag is, let's say it's four, so you would just be like, it's just the, you know. You would just do it like that. Would that then make it one of the homogeneous types? But the, the paper talks about the homogeneous things not just being floats. HFA, oh, only, okay. That's the only special. So for this, I would not follow those rules. I would follow the rules for. Um. The structure size here. Is it, is it eight? It would be, no. It'd be 12. So it would be this, it'd be the two. Two I64 values. Okay, two I64 values, then. It's not that the second value is the smaller thing. Okay. We can always just see what clang does, yeah? I feel like we come back to enum though, right? To do. Right? Enum. Call cons, enum API. Um. Alright, well. Oh, right, we already have layout on it. If LVM struct type dot. Um, layout size. Um, is less than eight. Right? Now, I intentionally haven't. Oh, shoot. Okay, I intentionally haven't um matched on the calling convention yet because I don't know how much code will be shared. So we're just gonna find out. And if we end up wishing that we had matched on it first and written two totally separate functions, then we'll just do that. Um. There's a lot of power in knowing that you're going to come back and make the code nice. And it takes the pressure off, right? And you should always do that. So it just sort of becomes a universal rule that it doesn't really matter. What matters is that you have a process for figuring out how it should be and that you make it that way once you know. So if it's, it is less than eight. Yeah. And then he says for return. With one small change. But we're not doing a return right now. Ooh, but it's like the same. Oh, but it's like the same-ish, so this probably is. So at this point, I might match, cuz it does look like it's different. Match call conf. Is return. Oh, maybe just match call conf. And I don't wanna have a K one-one yet. I've decided for now. Cuz then I can just say. My A, yeah, like the whole. It's frustrating that Rust doesn't have an ABI. It could be kinda fun if I could just say. Every all your K one code is just. Is just C ABI compatible. Um, okay. So let's do this. No commit. Check for HFA. We don't do that yet. Let's do our, let's do M D sixty-four. Let int type. Oh, you link it to your own code. Yep, it is a custom app. I was gonna do that, okay? Let's go size, let's size equal this madness. Okay. Size. Oh, because I have a helper for bits. Okay, we'll do this. Size bits. What's interesting is there's gonna be more info here than is in the um. L the official manual because this includes um L L V M specific hacks, right? So I'm gonna prefer to use his notes. Um, he doesn't say. Boom. Alright, that's it. Now let's do arm. Less than. Is up to is between eight and sixteen. It should say, he should say is less than eight bytes here. Is up to eight bytes is ambiguous. And how do I do this? Do I load from it? Uh, this is gonna be the type he picks. But then what does he? Two words. That's so funny, what? Um. What I'm wondering is. Yeah, let's go back to uh simple. So let's imagine, is it gonna be like this? For the ant ones? Cuz you can't. You can't bit cast pointers in L V M. You can only. Sorry, you can't bit cast aggregate values. There's no such thing as bit casting pointers cuz they don't have type info. So to achieve this cast, I think I think we load. Yeah, cuz all I have is memory anyway. So yeah, I I gotta load it. I just feels weird. I load from my struct that's smaller than sixty-four bits. I load an I sixty-four? That seems crazy. Right? So this is for a struct. Let's do a struct that's smaller. So let's do a U thirty-two. Um. Type def struct. Um, and I, right, that's it. Void. Function. Uh, uh, F. Turn. So I have a a script here that will just compile the C. No way! He sure does. And you allocate a foo. And you gap. You gap on the type foo. You allocate a foo. Oh, you do. Okay. Wow. Gross. This is disgusting. Cuz I didn't use it at all. Why do you trunk? Trunk I sixty-four. Okay, so you. You get a pointer to your own allocate. You don't use that yet. To the beginning of it. So. Yeah, to to the I thirty-two. Great. You call trunk. And then you do the store. Is that because it knows the struct? What if the struct were five bytes? Right? What is this? Is this less? Yeah. What if the struct were five bytes? Right? Ah, that's fast. What the fuck? Y'all. He truncates it to an I forty. I always read this as woo-woo table. Woo-woo. No way. Sure. You have an I forty. You have five X I A. Just store. An I forty? Well, I guess you know, you know it's smaller. Like you know that's never gonna be I ten thousand ninety-two. Cuz it'll be less than sixty-four. Guys, this is crazy. I don't wanna do this. I'm gonna have to allocate my struct. I know that I have its contents in an I sixty-four. Can't I just mem copy it in? Like, is it cuz the upper bits? Why can't I just mem copy? Oh, cuz I don't have memory. Right? I have the bits of my struct in a damn I sixty-four. Could I? Alexa? No. Wow. And then you store it. Well, there you go. It's just the size. It's a full size. What what if? What if I had um? Like another char on there? Like, is it is it to do with fields? Oh, this thing keeps closing my window. I five. Char X. You know? It's an I forty-eight, of course. I don't care. So basically, this. This is still preamble. This is just the processing of that. It's like, look, my job is just to get go from this I sixty-four to my canonical representation, which is which is a place that holds the struct. And that's percent. And that's percent two. So that's what I'll do. On the. Um. Well. Oh, okay. So here's maybe a good reason not to do this for my internal A B I's, right? Because then all my functions look like this. Oh, I'm sorry, my inter- yeah, for my internal ABI. It's it's on ABI at that point for my internal calling convention. Easy enough, though, to um to do the lowering. All the trouble here is on the receiving end. Does that mean? Oh, that means if I wanna receive, if I wanna be callable from C. No way. If I wanna be callable from C with a small struct. Then I have to do this. It's it's also like two lines of code. Interesting. Okay. Fun to learn about things. Okay. But that's not our problem right now. We're just. We're just producing this type. And I would like to see, like, I kinda wanna produce. So it's it's like enum um prepared. A B I R. And we won't, we'll just do ABI param. I you know, I mean ABI compatible param, but we're 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 encoding a little bit into this name. Um. Hmm, so we just have like um. Struct in integer, like you, I need that. That's the information that I need. Um, especially to unpack it on the other side, right? So I don't just need the type. I I need struct in integer, right? And I need. Oh, I need the struct type. I'd like to include the struct type. Um. No, I know what that is, though. So I can do the anti, although it you could recreate it pretty easily as well. So but that's nice, right? And then this can just do be um struct. By. Val, what do we wanna call like big struct? Use a pointer without. Oh, okay. Struct. By cutter. This is arm. I've been skipping over the larger. For structures larger than sixteen bits. What? Set by Val? Set by Val for. Intel. Struct by Val. We'll call it big struct, big struct. Set the by Val attribute. I'm not crazy, right? I we could confirm too if clang does this. So this is the arm one. So that it's not by Val. Big one. It just has to be more than sixteen, right? Foo two foo, big one big. It's nice how easy it is to test, right? Cutter no and F two. Cutter no I'd ask to. Doesn't say by Val. Okay. Does this even make sense to have? You don't. It gets better and better. Flattened into separate arguments if they have three or fewer fields. Not sure if that's authoritative, but. The Wasm struct. Okay. Well, I'm not worrying about it yet anyway. Let's just use. The arm sixty four one for now. And if we do any Wasm stuff, we just um. We won't do any strokes. Okay, yeah, it makes sense. Alright. Well, I think that's it for this one, it's. Been a meandering little adventure, but. This is kind of what it's like to stumble around and and learn new things, you know? Six months from now, I'll probably be someone who can um teach this stuff to someone, that's just the way it goes. You gotta start somewhere, so um. Hopefully, it's um beneficial for me to to share the to share the process of being of being clueless here. Um, yeah, if you watched, I I really appreciate it, um, see you next time.